At this time, I want to invite you to be in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with the integrity and justice of its own. Good evening. Welcome to the Sumter School District February 8, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting. All persons wishing to attend the virtual meeting may do so via YouTube Sumter School District Board Meeting and Sumter School District Facebook page. Due to COVID-19 and in compliance with recent public health orders, no members from the public will be able to attend the meeting in person. The meeting is held in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. The news media has been notified and a copy of the agenda has been made available to cover. The mission: The mission of Sumter School District is to equip students to be responsible, successful, and productive citizens in a global society. Vision of Sumter School District is to develop and cultivate competitive students who embrace diversity, act responsibly, and contribute positively to society. Our board members are Yos Trulli, Barbara Jackson, Chairperson or Chairwoman, Jay Frank Baker, Vice Chair, Darrell McGaney, Clerk, Brian Austin, Cheryl Ray, Matthew McCloud in his absence, he will be joining us virtually shortly, Johnny Hilton, Gloria Lee, Sean Reagan, Robin Mills, who represents the, she's the Deputy Director of Installation Support at Shaw Airport Base, Dr. Penelope Martin Knox, our Superintendent, and Amy Henderson, our Administrative Manager. The meeting is now called to order. Thank you for joining us for this meeting of the Board of Trustees. We appreciate your attendance and hope that you have a profitable evening. The agenda? May I get approval of the agenda? Upon consensus with no objection, the agenda, the agenda will stand approved as written. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Three point, three point is our board communication. Do we have, at this time, I invite the trustees to share any announcement? Yes, Mr. Ron Reagan?
I don't know if we've said it before, but I wanted to say thank you to Kingsbury Elementary School. I know last month was Board Appreciation Month, and I did receive my gift and I thought it was wonderful. So I wanted to say thank you to Kingsbury Elementary School.
Okay, they're just going around the street. Dr. Hilton?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to Ms. DeWitt out of Ebenezer. They invited me to come out as part of school board appreciation. Had a nice visit at Ebenezer, and it was very informative, very cordial, and I appreciated it very much. In addition, I want to say thank you to Dr. Miller at Career Center. We had, some of us went out there one day this week, last week. Had a nice visit out at Career Center. It was very informative. They were very cordial and it was a good visit. And then we also want to say thank you to the wing command out of Shaw, Colonel Sullivan. We had a visit, some of us on board went out to Shaw, had a great visit, very informative. It was just awesome, actually. Not saying Career Center and Ebenezer weren't awesome as well, but it's kind of a different deal out at Shaw, and it was a great visit. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I just wanted to give a shout out and thank you to the folks over at the Doghead. They were the group that sponsored me as a board member, and Chairman Bacon, her staff done a wonderful job. And the other thing, I just wanted to commend the staff, Dr. Martin Knox. I took a look at the virtual recruitment and I thought that was an outstanding event and certainly commend the staff for the way it was handled and conducted.
Reverend Gaines? Okay, Cheryl?
I wanted to thank the Wilder Elementary Principal, David Wright, and his staff for a nice visit last week, week before last, I guess it is now. Now, they took me on a tour. I got to see the children virtually. I really missed not getting to see the students, but all the teachers were interacting with the students and that's one staff that's ready to get their children back. I also wanted to thank them for, they gave me some gifts and I wore my T-shirt tonight. I wanted to show off because I had a monogram and personalized it. I would say, very nice. So thank you. And also I'd like to echo Dr. Hilton's sentiments about the Career Center. That was a good tour. Hadn't been out there in a number of years, so it was nice to see what's going on there. And I really enjoyed the Shaw Airport Base tour.
I would like to thank Kingsbury for their gift for Board Appreciation Month, as well as Mr. Pearson and Sumter High School for their wonderful gifts as well. Echoing sentiments of those who for me, a great visit at Shaw. And then I have a couple of announcements. On the 4th of February, I participated in a webinar with the South Carolina PTA on social-emotional learning series on how to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline. They have a number of other webinars coming up. They have one on March 4th entitled "Childhood Trauma in 3D Lessons Learned: Working With and Parenting Hurting Kids." And I also participated on the 4th of, the Post and Courier did a Beyond the Headline series, where they're doing a Beyond the Headline series, schools in COVID-19. They talked about some of the best practices or practices that's been implemented in one of our larger school districts in the state. They have, the Post and Courier have another webinar coming up on the 11th. An inside look at reporting on the school district and why it's so important for the community. And also Albany State University is doing a series of five, three-part units on equity and excellence in our schools neighboring, and one of our neighboring district superintendents is doing a presentation on March 16th. And that concludes my announcement, but I will share that information from the webinar from the 4th on disrupting, the disruption of the school-to-prison pipeline once that presentation is shared and any of the other presentations for the board, if you would like to attend. Thank you.
Yes, and I would like to thank Principal Mary K. Norton from High Hills, who had me visit with them and got a great tour of the school and we had some great discussion and we have some great ideas. So really appreciated that time with them. And I'd also like to thank Kingsbury Elementary for my gift. It's awesome. Thank you.
I would just like to thank Kingsbury for my gift as well.
Okay, and I'm going to echo ditto to those that went to Shaw. I thought that Colonel and Lieutenant Colonel Mrs. Sullivan was right there with us the whole time and, you know, I just thought that it was an awesome opportunity for us to see the base along with husband and wife team. I'd like to say thank them publicly for the opportunity for hosting us there. The Career Center, I, we did a tour of the building and thanked Mrs. Miller and her staff for welcoming us in the way that she did. I'd like to send a big shout out for the virtual recruitment fair that Dr. Coombes and his team put forth on, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before. I thought that it was very, very well done and I've heard so many positive comments about it. If you haven't viewed it, I invite you to go back and look at it. It is, it was really good and it was very well attended. The attendance was great and I got some input from some of the people that applied. They said that, you know, it was the best that they've attended. So kudos to Human Resources Department. Thank you to Kingsbury for your, what is it, picture and your accommodation. I think you gave most of us one of those, so we do appreciate that. And Lakewood, I mentioned you last time. We do appreciate, I appreciate your kindness and the, it was great to be recognized and know that we have people thinking about us. So we do appreciate you just like you appreciate us. Okay, any other communication? Okay, then hearing none, we will move on to our community reports. The Citizen Advisory, I'd just like to say that on that one is that you may want to share, well, I'll share with the board as we finalize the list of persons that have signed up or that you provided to be a part of that committee, hopefully sometime in April. So as we finish gathering the names, we will certainly share those with you for that committee. All right, Facilities, Mr. Rankin?
We have a meeting scheduled for March 3rd, and so it is on the calendar for the committee to meet there. But tonight, there is no.
Finance, Mrs. Ray?
All right, at our Finance Committee meeting, we've had two recommendations to bring before the board. The committee was in consensus that the board continue dialogue regarding bonuses and salaries with the full board. And also, we wanted to talk about the capital projects from the 520 Fund. Recommend, we recommended that the administration bring suggestions as to the immediate needs that we could use the balance in the fund for that might be eligible and we could apply that so to improvements. So just letting the money sit there.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ray. Policy Committee?
Yes, ma'am. The Policy Committee brings forth the following recommendations for first reading. The South Carolina School Board Association Policy and Legislative Manual update are before us this afternoon, as well as first reading of Model Policy BEBL, Board Members and Electronic Communication. And there was a conversation around some administrative rule clarification on the Citizens Advisory Committee, Policy BDE-R, and the Community Members' Application Draft. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at those additions or edits to those two documents. And for board information, the Policy Administrative Rule, JCK-R, Professional Staff Reassignments and Transfers was discussed. And the Policy Committee, along with the administration, will continue to work on a sample policy, ACA and ACA-R Equity and KF Community Use of School Facilities. And as I mentioned in the announcement portion, one of our neighboring districts is doing a presentation on equity, I think that will be beneficial to our Policy Committee members to participate in, so that we can have more in-depth dialogue surrounding the equity piece. And that concludes my committee report.
Okay, thank you.
Question? Any of these policies, are we going to take any action on any of these tonight?
The ones that are first reading. You'll take action on those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. We're now down to the Transportation Act, Hawk. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. We met on January 28th and we wanted to bring back two recommendations to the board. The committee asked the superintendent to bring recommendations regarding community members prior to the next committee meeting sometime at the end of February or the beginning of March. The committee also recommends that the board ask the superintendent to present information regarding an outside consultant that worked with district staff to look at zoning matters. An outside consultant will ensure fair and equitable services to our students. Staff can begin to background work and take into consideration items to include locations of our buildings, demographics, special services, and households having students attend schools close to their homes. The intent is to shorten route time for students, keeping in mind and focusing on addressing the safety of bus stops, especially in the rural areas.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Okay, yes, Dr. Hilton, question?
All right, so when is it appropriate for us to have some discussion on these records? For example, the Finance Committee recommended that we have further discussion regarding bonus. The Transportation is recommending that we have some discussion about an outside consultant. Would we be, would it be appropriate to discuss these things this evening? Or would we be out of order and we have to put this on the agenda for a future meeting? That's my question. Can we talk about these things now? Or do we need to talk about them in the future at another meeting?
And items for the next meeting, and their agenda items for the next meeting. The recommendations would be agenda items for the next meeting.
The procedure would be the agenda items would be, there would be agenda items for the next meeting?
So for, at our next meeting, we would need to have something on the agenda about further discussion about bonuses?
If that's what, I think she asked for, that was Finance, the Finance Committee?
That was a recommendation that the board have further discussion?
Yes.
Right? My chairperson?
Yeah.
And the Finance, and the Transportation Committee's recommended that we discuss an outside consultant. So that would be on the agenda for our next meeting?
The recommendations would go on the agenda for the next meeting? Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to clarify.
If any of those items are up for action tonight, and we have to take a vote on any of those actions. Not saying that we are, but saying in the agenda, if any of those items are up for first reading or whatever, there is an opportunity. When you're asked if there's any questions to, that would be the time to do it, if, if any of these items are up for action. Otherwise, if they're not, then we will look at another meeting.
Yeah, well, those are not up for action. Yeah, so they would be on the agenda.
Thank you for allowing that clarification.
Of course, by all means. Okay, we're now down to the 3.3, our legislative update, by none other than Dr. Darren Hilton, our board legislative companion.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. There's a lot going on in Columbia, as I'm sure you're watching the news every day. First on the list is the Retroactive Teacher Step Increase. It's passed Tuesday, the House approved third and final reading and sent it to the Senate. It's a $50 million retroactive step pay increase for this current school year. The Senate Finance K-12 Subcommittee will take it up tomorrow. So there'll be more discussion tomorrow about the Retroactive Teacher Step Increase. Couple of other bills over there relating to school board removal. The Senate will continue to discuss a bill that among other things dissolved school boards in districts declared to be in a state of education emergency. The House will begin its discussion on its version through committee this week. A second bill authorizing the government to remove individual school board members who are guilty of malfeasance, misfeasance, incompetency, absenteeism, conflicts of interest, misconduct, persistent neglect of duty in office, or incapacity will be considered by the Senate Education Committee this Wednesday. There's a bill also been introduced about COVID-19 vaccines for teachers. The Senate is expected to pass a bill tomorrow that prioritizes the administration of the COVID-19 vaccine for teachers and school support staff. The bill calls for teachers and school staff to be moved to Phase 1A and directs DHEC, the State Department of Education, and local school districts to implement a plan for vaccination within 30 days of the bill's effective date. And also mandates that after the vaccine has been offered to all eligible teachers and staff, the districts must offer five-day in-person classroom instruction. There's another bill over there called the Innovative Schools Bill. Last week, the House passed its version of the Schools Innovation Bill and sent it to the Senate. The Senate Education Committee is scheduled on Wednesday to take up the Senate's version of the bill that creates a process for school boards to apply for one or more of their schools to become schools of innovation. And then finally, the COVID-19 Safe Harbor Bill advances to the Senate Judiciary Committee. It was passed by the Judiciary Subcommittee and will go to the Judiciary Committee. It provides that businesses, healthcare facilities, government entities, and schools, including school districts, with reasonable protections from the risk of expensive lawsuits related to the coronavirus pandemic. The requirements for granting safe harbor, excuse me, include that the entity, meaning the school district, would substantially adhere to public health guidelines applicable at the time. A person filing a claim or a lawsuit must prove that the entity had caused the injury or damage through grossly negligent, reckless, willful, or intentional misconduct by failing to meet any attempt to adhere to public health guidelines. All of this information and much more was received by all of us this morning in an email. So if you'd like to do further study, you can refer to the email that we all received this morning from the South Carolina School Board Association. Thanks so very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hilton. Thank you very much. Okay, we're down now to go right to the superintendent's report. Dr. Martin Knox, would you just please go from 4.1 until 4.5 and, and go the, whatever way you see fit?
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson, Vice Chairman Bacon, members of the Sumter School District Board, and members of the community. This month is Love the Bus Month. The month of February is a long celebration held every February by the American School Bus Council. This celebration highlights the important role of our school bus drivers in public education with a particular focus on thanking school bus drivers for safely transporting children to and from school each and every day. Now here in Sumter School District, our bus drivers are not just bus drivers, but they are couriers of the most precious item we have, and that's our children. They are the first individuals that our children see and in many cases, they are the last individuals our children see. And so I don't know if any of you have ridden a school bus, but I would encourage you to take the opportunity to ride a bus just to see how fabulous our drivers are. They take good care of our children. And so I just want to say thank you publicly to our bus drivers and our bus attendants for the work that you do each and every day. They safely transport our children so that they can go into the classrooms and learn. But not only are they the transporters of our children, but they've also helped us through this pandemic. And what do I mean by helping us through the pandemic? Our drivers have assumed other responsibilities in our school districts so we can continue to have the district run and operate. Our drivers have also been transporters of breakfasts and lunches in our community so that students are able to retrieve healthy meals. And our drivers are also those who drive our buses that have Wi-Fi and they sit in our community so our students can continue to have access to the virtual options that are provided. So we are proud of the outstanding job our bus drivers do for our students and for our Sumter School District. So if you have not thanked a bus driver, please make sure that you do so, not just in the month of February, but each and every day. And tonight, I would like to share something with you that our teacher forum has been working on. And if you haven't recognized, here in Sumter School District, we are very fortunate because our teachers are resilient and they truly demonstrate that we are Sumter strong. To show these characteristics, members of the Sumter School District Teacher Forum submitted video clips to show just how much they love our students. This video will be unveiled again in February at the Teacher Forum meeting, but I wanted to take the opportunity to allow you to have the firsthand look at a video clip that was put together by our teachers forum. So without further ado, I'll step to the side so Ms. Galloway can play the video for us to review.
We will teach you on our.
We will teach you, I'm going to be easy though, that every is small.
We will teach you with our own kids home.
All right, so when you turn in your assignment, can you all hear me?
We will teach you from our phone.
We will teach you with two kids on our head.
We can teach you from our house.
We can even teach with our spells.
We will teach you from our Chromebook.
We will teach you where to look.
We will teach you in a room.
We will teach you from our living room.
We will teach you on the green.
We will teach you from our favorite seat.
We will teach you from afar.
We will teach you from our car.
And we will teach you from our dining room table.
We will teach you as long as we are able.
We will teach you from our kitchen.
We will teach you to all kitchens.
We will teach you to make fun.
We will keep teaching until we are done.
We will teach you here or there.
We can teach you anywhere.
We will teach you until we beat this coronavirus.
We will teach you because you inspire us.
From all of us to all of you.
We are still Sumter strong too.
So I hope that you got the message. Our teachers love our children and our children love our teachers. And not only do we come to school each and every day, whether we are in a virtual capacity or face-to-face, our teachers are going above and beyond measure to ensure that our children receive quality education. And so while our teacher forum put this on together, as you see, they have a smile on their face. While we can't control some of the things that are happening in our nation and our environment, we continue to move forward because we are still Sumter strong. This concludes that portion of the superintendent's tour of Sumter. And if you don't mind, would you give our teacher forum a round of applause? Thank you, Dr. Laws. I saw that, I saw that. And at this time, I would ask for Dr. McCloud in the Office of Academics to provide a presentation to our board and to our community. And we have so many on here, I can't see everybody to introduce you. So Dr. McCloud, I don't know which page you're on, but would you go ahead and introduce your team? Oh, there you are. Introduce your team and the information for our board and our community, please.
Absolutely. I just love that presentation. But good evening, Chairwoman, Dr. Jackson, Vice Chairman, Dr. Baker, Superintendent, Dr. Martin Knox, and the Honorable Board of Trustees. Tonight, I have several members of the Office of Academics with me to share some accountability and assessment updates. As you will see, we work collaboratively in the Office of Academics and across departments to support our schools. With me tonight are Dr. Lamont Moore, Director of Testing and Accountability, Dr. David Laws, Director of Instructional Technology and Career Technology Education, Dr. Emily Kempton, Coordinator of English Language Arts, Reach to Succeed, and World Languages, Ms. Kristy Carnes, the Elementary English Language Arts. Ms. Kristy Carnes, the Elementary English Language Arts Specialist, Ms. Carla King, the Coordinator of Mathematics and Homeschool, Ms. Monica Paye, the Elementary Math Specialist, Ms. Laura Smith, oh goodness, Coordinator of Science, Social Space, P, Health, Finarts, and all other things. So in addition to them, we also have Ms. Jennifer Miller from the Office of Finance, and Dr. Jacque Humus from the Human Resources Department sharing in this presentation with us. So as we begin, I just want to take a second to say that 2019-2020 school year was unlike any other that our district, state, our nation has faced. With facilities closed during the novel coronavirus, in March, our schools were unable to administer many of the accountability measures that are used for the basis of our annual report cards each year. And therefore, this report card does not accurately reflect an overall view of our academic progress. Instead, these report cards highlight those aspects of our education system such as safety, finance, and classroom environment that are equally important. And some of this information comes directly from our state superintendent Molly Spearman. And as stated, the COVID-19 for South Carolina school facilities closed for in-person learning on March 16th until the end of the school year. Fortunately, our district, with eight of our teachers and schools, were able to deploy emergency remote learning overnight that allowed instruction to continue in a new virtual environment. And as we have continued to navigate these unfamiliar, ever-changing circumstances caused by the pandemic, we have been supporting our teachers and schools in adjusting the content and pedagogical approaches to ensure we are providing support for all students in Sumter School District. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Moore to provide more detailed information concerning the testing waivers and other information pertinent to breaking down the district report card. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Dr. McLeod, and good evening to everyone. We have worked collaboratively on this presentation. So we're going to jump right into what we have prepared for you. And before we get started, uh, here's just a slide that will give you an outline of what we will be covering tonight in the presentation. Uh, so to your left, you should see an outline of the agenda. And to your right, you'll see information on how to access the access to report card. And so if you want to pull the report card up and click through this as we go through the presentation, you're more than welcome to do so. We will be going through each part of the report card to give you a little more of a deep dive look at what information reported for the 2019 and 2020 school year. So just an overview of the timeline. Um, quite a few things happened last year in 2019-2020, if you can imagine. And so this is just an overview of what happened educationally. In March of 2020, of course, we had the COVID-19 school closures that impacted life as we know it in our school district. Also in March of 2020, the South Carolina Department of Ed sent out a memo to all the school districts in our state that waived the 2019-2020 spring assessment report card ratings and the assessments. And so that was a welcome relief to all of our schools as our schools were not in session. And we were given that grace by our South Carolina Department of Ed and our federal government of not administering those assessments. Um, in October of 2020, the Education Oversight Committee made a recommendation to waive the 2020-2021 report card rating. So on this particular report card, you will not see a rating, and that is different than a report card from the prior year. Uh, but that was waived in October of 2020. And in January 2021, just last month, the South Carolina Department of Ed submitted a second waiver to the U.S. Department of Ed to ask for a waiver for the spring testing in 2021. And so we're still waiting to hear from our federal government regarding this waiver, but a second request was made by our South Carolina Department of Ed to waive that testing. We have proceeded with testing as required this school year, and so we have continued those accountability measures for this school year. So part one of unpacking the report card, uh, we will take a look at the eight components that are known as academics um, and go through each one of those components together and give you some more information on each of them. The first part relates to academic achievement, and all of this is informed by the spring summative data. And as you can imagine, we did not have any assessment data for spring of 2020. And so you'll notice on this, on our district report card that it says that there is no data available. There is some data related to the graduation rate. And so if, when you get to this page and we click that hyperlink, it will reveal the 2019-2020 graduation rate as well as the party index. Our overall student performance, as you can see, we have no data from the spring, so there is no data available. Preparing for Success takes a look at assessment data as it relates to our readiness of the students in kindergarten, first, and second grade. And so we report this to our state with two assessments. The first is the kindergarten readiness assessment. And in this slide, you will see how our district compares to the state um, and those percentages. And they are measured in four areas. So all of our kindergartners are compared across the state. Our district is compared to the other districts in our state. Our first and second grade students are, they participated in the NWDA math assessment, and this is something that they do every year. One thing to remember about this particular slide, and as you can see, the percentages are listed, uh, I do want everyone to know that the reporting for this particular data point was optional. The State Department decided to make that summer survey that captures this information, they decided to make it optional for principals to complete. So we did not have 100% of our principals to report. We did have a few that reported, and those who did decide to report, their data is reflected here. So the information for the NWDA math, um, you'll notice that it, um, it's not representative, uh, representative of the entire district. It's only a representation of those principals that reported. Our English language learners, these are students that come to us uh, who speak multiple languages in our home. We do have teachers that service them. And as you can see in this particular slide, uh, our students are outperforming students across the state. Um, and you can see that, um, how they are progressing towards their proficiency target. We measured this through the Access for Ls test that we give to all of our students each year to measure their progress toward their proficiency target. Once students reach that proficiency target, they are exited from the program. So this data, uh, it reflects all the students who are in our program and how they perform as it relates to others who have them across the state. The graduation rate is a intricate formula that pulls from multiple data sources. And so our State Department collects all of those data points from us, and they use the formula to calculate how we're doing with our graduation rate. This particular part of the district report card, as you can see, it will give you the four-year cohort graduation rate. Um, so you can see how our district compared to the state uh, in the year of 2017, all the way up to last year, which was 2020. On this particular part of the report card, if you click the details portions of this part of the report card, it will reveal the graduation rate by demographic. So you can actually dig a little bit deeper and see how this graduation rate affected all of our demographics in our school district. It also reveals the annual dropout rate and our dropout recovery rate. This information is pulled from several different sources, as we stated. And it's important to note that there were assessment pieces that, um, we did not, we were not able to assess our students in. So there were certain, some tests, specifically the WIN test, that we did not give in the spring because we were closed. And that particular data is not included in this information. Our college and career readiness is also an intricate formula that is pulled from multiple data sources. As you can see, this particular part of the report card shows the percentage of students that are ready for career or college or career ready. And so you see those two percentages. They have sections where you can dig just a little bit deeper into the measures that, um, were captured to create this college and career readiness percentage. As you can see, on the far left of this slide, these are all of the assessment pieces that went into play when calculating, uh, college and career readiness. And as I said previously, our when or ready to work assessment data is missing from this configuration because we were closed in the spring and could not assess our students as we normally would. Also, part of the district report card is the, uh, results from the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NATE. We did not participate in NATE last year, but it is available on all of the district report cards. If you're interested in that data, there is a hyperlink that will show you how South Carolina compared to the national average. The NATE assessment assesses, uh, two grade levels, the fourth grade in math and reading, as well as eighth grade math and reading. And so they use those two grade levels to determine how states are doing and how we're doing in comparison to, uh, others across, uh, across the nation. So you'll see that South Carolina is, uh, just under the national average, but very comparable to what is happening at the national, uh, level. Here is, uh, information about where we are as far as our state goals. And we measure our progress based on our summative test data. And of course, we did not have summative test data in the spring. So you will see on this part of the report card that there is, um, language saying that that data is not available. Um, you will also see our baseline, where we were in 2017, as well as our targets for 2020, 2026, and 2035. And so this will not be populated on the school report card until we get new spring summative data. The next part of the school report card talks about, uh, school improvement. And this particular part will outline the schools that have been targeted for additional support from our State Department. You'll notice two categories. The first is the Comprehensive Support and Improvement Schools, or CSI schools. These are Title I schools that are performing at or below the fifth percentile of all Title I schools in the state. CSI schools are identified every three years, and each school receives technical assistance funds and is assigned a state-level transformation coach. We only have two CSI schools in our district, and those schools are Cala Springs Elementary and R.E. Davis College Preparatory Academy. These two schools are frozen on the list because we did not have summative data or summative, um, assessment data from this past spring. That summative data also informs how, um, the progress of the schools are making in that three-year cycle. And so all of the schools that I'm going to explain in the next couple of slides are frozen on these lists until we resume spring testing. The second category of schools, you'll notice, are called the Additional Targeted Support and Improvement Schools, or ATSIs. These are schools with at least one subgroup of students that are performing at or below the fifth percentile of the highest-performing CSI school in the state. So ATSIs schools are also identified every three years, and each school receives federal school improvement funds, technical assistance, and professional development from the South Carolina Department of Ed. Chestnut Oaks was identified as an ATSIs school based on their performance of their English as second language students or their L subgroup. And the other schools, Crestwood High, Manchester Elementary, and Sumter High, were identified as ATI schools, ATSIs schools because of the performance of their special education subgroup. And so those two subgroups, those subgroups were performing both at or below the fifth percentile of the highest-performing CSI school in the state. So like I said before, these students, these schools will be frozen on these improvement lists until we resume our spring summative testing. We also have priority schools. And priority schools are schools that are at or below the 10th percentile among all schools in the state. Like the other two groups, these schools are identified every three years, and each school receives state technical assistance funds and access to South Carolina School Improvement Framework, Evidence-Based Intervention Guide, and Professional Learning Opportunities. And this is provided by our South Carolina Department of Education. We have four, um, priority schools in our district, and they are listed on the screen. Furman Middle School, Cherryvale Elementary School, Roswell Drive Elementary School, and Lakewood High School. These schools, like the other two groups, are frozen on the priority school list until we resume our spring summative testing. And once that information comes in, the State Department evaluates whether the schools have made enough progress to come off of the priority schools list. And the same applies for the ATSIs schools and the CSI schools. So that was the eight, that, those were the eight components of the first part of the report card. We'll now take a look at part two, uh, which are the remaining four elements of the district report card, and all of them relate to the school environment. The first section relates to our student engagement. A lot of our student engagement information is gathered through surveys. We give surveys to teachers, students, and our parents. But of course, we were closed in the spring of last year, and so we were not able to send these surveys out to our students, teachers, or parents. So you will notice on this particular slide that we do not have current records available. Also, we also look at student levels of engagement based on, uh, the numbers of students we have retained in our percentage, the percent of students certified, gifted, and talented programs, uh, and our chronic accentism. So you will notice that there are slight differences um, last year as compared to the year prior. Most of this is attributed to the COVID-19 pandemic that, of course, impacted our students prior to closing, um, last year at the end of the school year. So you'll notice that this information was reported, but the bulk of this student engagement information is gathered through surveys, which we were not able to send out last year. Our classroom environment, uh, relates to our teachers and how they're qualified. So I am going to give the floor to Dr. Humus, who will explain some of the information that you're seeing right now.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Um, I get the pleasure, uh, good evening, everyone. I get the pleasure of, uh, reviewing the classroom environment and the classroom makeup of our teachers. Uh, the total number of teachers is up, uh, from nine, uh, nine seventy-eight to nine eighty-six. The percentage of K-three teachers are certified in Read to Succeed. Uh, reading certification was not tracked the past two years. Percentage of teachers with advanced degrees is also up from sixty-point-two percent to sixty-one-point-nine percent. The average teacher salary is up from fifty thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars to fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Percentage of teachers on continuing contracts is down from seventy-one-point-six to sixty-seven-point-five. The percentage of teachers returning from previous year, current year, uh, is up from eighty-seven-point-four to eighty-seven-point-eight. And the percentage of teachers returning from previous year, three-year average, is also up from eighty-six-point-three to eighty-seven-point-zero, which means we are retaining our teachers. Percentage of teacher vacancies for more than nine weeks is down from six-point-one to... is down from six point one to one point zero. Percentage of inexperienced teachers teaching those core classes is down from eighty, or eight point six to six point one. The number of inexperienced teachers teaching in core classes is down from thirty-one to twenty-one. The percentage of out-of-field teachers teaching in core classes is up from two point five to three point five. And the number of those out-of-field teachers teaching in those core classes is up from nine to twelve. We have teachers that are wanting to teach other areas, and they qualify for the out-of-field permit, which means they have to take at least twelve hours each year to get that certification, is on an upswing.
Thank you, Dr. Kuhn. The next component of the school, the district report card, is the student safety component. And like student engagement portion of the district report card, this information is gathered through surveys. On this slide, you'll see some sample questions that are asked, asked on the survey. We did not have the opportunity to survey our students last year, our parents or teachers. And so you'll see on this particular portion that there is no data available. Financial data, I am going to yield to Jennifer Miller, who will go through some of the changes this year for our financial data.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. This financial information that is in front of you is from fiscal year 2019. These figures were compiled from various sources, and the first one we're looking at is the average teacher salary, which is obtained from the professional certified staff file. And as you can see, and as Dr. Kuhn has mentioned on his slide, this is up from fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars to fifty one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Next is the percentage of expenditures for instructions. And this figure is obtained from the inside report, and it's compiled from our accounting data within our accounting system. And you can see that that is also up from fifty point two up to fifty-three point nine. Next is the percentage of expenditures for teacher salaries that is down from forty-three point eight to thirty-seven point five. The average administrator's salary is down from ninety-one thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars to eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. The percentage of students in poverty, which is obtained from our power school system, is slightly down from seventy-four point four to seventy-four point two. And then the next, the remaining items are obtained from our per pupil expenditures, which are obtained from Every Student Succeeds Act, which is our ESUP reporting tool. That data is submitted to the Department of Education annually and is compiled from the data within our accounting software. And all the values were up, with the exception of the state and local non-personnel per pupil expenditure, which was down from nine hundred and fifty-five dollars to eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the Office of Academics, and I believe it is Ms. Christine Barnes.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Good evening. I hope you're all doing well tonight. I'm hoping to be sharing with you some data from our current school year, 2021. As you all may know, on June 25th of last year, Act 142 was passed as part of the CARES Act appropriations. This act requires all districts to administer pre- and post-assessment to kindergarten and ninth graders at the beginning and the middle of the school year. The other requirement was that we must use one of the South Carolina Department of Education's approved assessments. Our district already uses NWEA Math Growth, so that is the assessment that we use to assess our students K through nine within the first ten days of the school year and prior to releasing for winter holiday. The next slide will show you, these are the math percentiles, again, from NWEA Math Growth, taken in the fall of 2020 and the winter of 2021, which is technically December of 2020. The percentiles are based on the grade level mean rent score. And as you can see, in our lower grades, kindergarten through approximately fourth, third or fourth. The percentiles are much higher in the fall, as opposed to the winter. We are attributing that difference to the fact that in the fall, being that we were virtual, ninety-seven percent of the students who tested, tested in a remote environment. Versus the winter, where we had sixty-eight percent of our students test in a remote environment. So again, we do attribute that difference in the fall to the fact that they were not with us and they were in the home. We have several, also anecdotal, I guess you would say, records where parents had assisted those students when they were at home in the fall. So that's where we stand with winter, based on math. The next slide is going to show you the reading percentiles for fall and winter. And you may notice that this graph does not include kindergarten or first grade. And that is because at the end of July, the State Department allowed districts to use their MTSS screening tool to meet Act 142's pre- and post-assessment requirements. Again, in reading, you will see a slight difference between fall and winter percentiles. Again, we attribute that to the remote testing environment. And I also wanted to note that these, the data shown here is matched. So this only includes the students that we have valid fall and winter scores for. And that's approximately eight thousand three hundred students that we're looking at here. And then the next piece of data I have for you refers to the MTSS early literacy screener requirement. This is not new to this year. This is something we did last year, where the state requires districts to screen kindergarten and first-grade students three times a year for potential reading difficulties. Those screeners must assess alphabetic principle, alphabet knowledge, phonological awareness, and fluency. The State Department, excuse me, has approved several different screeners that we are allowed to choose from. This year, we are using NWEA Math Reading Fluency, which is part of the NWA suite that we are already using. So you will see on the next slide, the first assessment that we are looking at is the phonological awareness. We have kindergarten and first-grade data here compared fall to winter. This assessment was given at the same time as Math Growth was given. As you can see, again, we have some students, more students in the exceeds in the fall versus the winter. And then if we go to the next slide, now we are looking at phonics, word recognition, which would be your alphabet knowledge, letter naming, and alphabetic principle. Again, you'll see the fall to winter comparison. And NWEA Math Reading Fluency reports in categories much like our state assessment. So we can see our students who are below approaches, meets, and exceeds. And this data will be sent to the State Department in June. The last information we have from the Math Reading Fluency assessment is the oral reading fluency. This only included first grade, because generally, we don't expect kindergartners to read long connected texts. As well as you will notice, in the fall, we had seventy-one students who went to the oral reading fluency test. And that's because Math Reading Fluency is an adaptive test. But those seventy-one students weren't high on the phonological awareness and the phonics section and were routed to the oral reading fluency. You'll also note that a hundred percent of the students who did do oral reading fluency in the fall fell in the exceeds category. And that's because, again, in the fall, we do not have expectations of first graders reading extended connected texts, whereas that changes in the winter. And we had eighty-five students in the winter. And as you can see there, we still had about seventy-one percent in the exceeds category, with twenty-three point five percent in the meets and four point seven in approaches. And that is the data for Math Reading Fluency and our early literacy screener. So I think at this time, I am passing it on to, back to Dr. McLeod. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Barnes, and as you, as you noted, we are in a virtual testing setting. There are a variety of factors that can influence either positively or negatively on the scores that we receive from the students. It's just much harder to control the settings when we have students not in front of us testing. And our students are used to being with us when they're testing and having those environments controlled. But due to the closing of schools last spring, I do need to note that we are unable to accurately compare math from last year to this year. We can't compare the fall of 2019 to the fall of 2020. As you've already seen, the fall of 2020 results could be considered slightly inflated due to the virtual testing. We also can't compare the fall, the winter of 2019 to the winter of 2020, because traditionally, some of the school districts has allowed the winter testing to be optional at the school level based on their needs. And so there isn't enough data from winter of nineteen to compare to the winter of 2020. And of course, due to the school closures in the spring of 2020, we didn't have any spring data that we will have to compare to the spring of 2021. However, we will be continuing to track the individual student data from fall to winter to spring. So as we continue with these cycles of testing, we will continue to update you as the data becomes available. But I'd like to look now at some of the responses that we've made to the data that we do have. In responding to the data as far as the standards, the Office of Academics has been working with the State Department to identify the standards across content and grade level deemed essential for the progression of learning from grade to grade. We have been providing support through professional development, learning opportunities every other Wednesday and at other times on demand as needed by the schools and our individual teachers or teacher groups. This support includes unpacking the standards to ensure teacher clarity. And you will hear from some of our content coordinators and specialists that this includes observing and supporting teaching standards at appropriate grade level rigor and also standard strength and instructional coaching with our coaches that are actually in the schools to be able to support. If you look at our student engagement, the Office of Academics has continually worked with teachers and schools to provide support to, for student engagement in virtual lessons by providing effective tools and strategies for both virtual and hybrid settings. We've worked diligently with the teachers, administrators, and other areas of support to move beyond the traditional lecture format to more engaging strategies to include virtual small group breakout sessions that allow students to collaborate with each other and are in small groups with the teacher. Professional development opportunities continue to be offered to support teachers in providing strategies and lessons aimed at engaging students in the learning. If you look at the assessments, the Office of Academics is also supporting teachers in the use of formative assessments to perform daily instruction. Some of the, some of these efforts are focused on better utilizing the Math Continuum, which is divining continuum. And this is geared to meet students where they are instructionally and determine individualized learning paths from that baseline. We're supporting teachers in their efforts to intervene early and reteach and be assessed as needed to monitor student growth. We also, with the help of the State Department, just secured an adaptive K through twelve support known as Exact App, which is a product of the Edmentum, which takes our math data and transforms it so that it tells where the students are ready to learn, provides additional support electronically in that group on those individual paths. So we're working collaboratively to monitor instruction and provide ongoing professional development as needed to address the areas of weakness with the assessments. So finally, in relation to our college and career ready, the Office of Academics is continuing to work with the schools to provide additional opportunities for students to participate in higher-level academic coursework. We've been in partnership with our local higher education institutes, including our two-year, four-year, and industry credentialing entities. Furthermore, we have been working to reengage students as far as actively attending and participating in virtual and hybrid settings. Some of these strategies includes teachers making contacts with students and their families, administrators making follow-up contacts, home welfare checks by administrators, guidance counselors, social workers, and school resource officers. The Office of Academics will be providing a more detailed presentation on the attendance and those strategies at the Monday, March 8th board meeting. At this time, I will ask some of the members of the Office of Academics to briefly share some more detailed strategies associated with their content areas. If Ms. Carla King, coordinator of mathematics, and Ms. Monica Payne, the elementary math specialist, will share what they are working on in their area. I would appreciate it.
Good evening. The following improvement strategies with consistent use can impact student achievement in mathematics. Because schools were disrupted in the spring, and it's had a significant impact on the health and safety of students, our first strategy is to focus on the social and emotional well-being of students by being positive, being encouraging, and trying to build relationships with them. Our second strategy was to purposefully work with goal set. That is, being intentional with the pre-assessments, looking at what students need through a non-deficit lens. And then using iXL, we have Dreambox, we have Alex, we have Apex, and other available programs to assist. Our third strategy is to use equity, equitable, and effective mathematics teaching practices. And that is by establishing math goals to focus learning, implement tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving, using and connecting mathematical representations, facilitating meaningful mathematical discourse, pose purposeful questions, that is, in hold and small breakouts, building procedural fluency from conceptual understanding, supporting productive struggle in learning mathematics. And that is looking at math from a growth mindset, and eliciting and using evidence of student thinking. Thank you. And we're moving to Dr. Hampton.
Good evening.
Good evening. The following strategies when implemented with fidelity can lead to improvement in learning outcomes. First, schools should establish and nurture the literacy learning community in every classroom. The International Literacy Association asserts that literacy, the ability to identify, understand, interpret, create, compute, and communicate using visual, audible, and digital materials across disciplines and in any context, and access to excellent and equitable literacy instruction are basic human rights. Ways to accomplish establishing literacy learning communities include using writing to build relationships. Students should be writing authentic texts daily, engaging in one-on-one reading and writing conferences, and this can be done virtual as well, using Google Meet, breakout rooms, and then also in-person, utilizing self-reflection and self-assessment frequently, providing timely and written communication to students, keeping learning active and engaging, providing opportunities for students to share their knowledge with each other, and maintaining high expectations for learning by checking in frequently with students and their parents to understand what they have learned and still need to learn. Second, when planning units of study and daily lesson, teachers must ensure their expectations for student learning are clear. Students succeed when teachers and students are clear in what students are learning, why and how they are learning it, and how they will determine student mastery. John Hattie in visible learning explains teacher clarity is both a method and a mindset, and it has an effect size of point seven five. Hattie describes teacher clarity as teaching that is organized and intentional. It brings a forthrightness and fairness to the classroom because student learning is based on transparent expectation. We can increase teacher clarity by planning units of instruction with the end in mind. Each lesson and engagement within lessons should build toward the ultimate goals for demonstrating what students should know and be able to do. Three questions should guide teachers when planning: what am I learning? Why and how am I learning it? And how will I, how will I know when I've learned it? Students should be able to answer these questions for each and every lesson. Third, it is essential that students engage in purposeful, authentic reading and writing each day. Mike Schmoker and Results Now states, "Reading and writing in combination contribute greatly to critical intelligence." But it's hard to imagine either without the third essential leg of authentic literacy, which includes text-based discussion, dialogue, and argument. Students must engage literacy in ways that matter. Merely completing worksheets and skill exercises do not require the deep, critical thinking that students must engage in to become fully literate citizens, emphasis before democracy. And I'll turn it over to Lauren Smith.
Good evening, all members. My task is to share critical strategies for science and social studies. Both of these subjects will be implementing new standards next year. As a result, we will be working with teachers to write in curriculum either later this year or early this summer that aligns those new standards. Professional development will continue to be provided on best practice in science and social studies, while new sessions will be developed in the ad to assist teachers in impacting and unpacking the new standards. We'll continue providing equitable and high-quality opportunities for our students. For example, we are currently working with Camp Lea-Poltz Grant to provide their wetlands and bath ends program to all of our fourth and fifth grade students, either synchronously or asynchronously. During last summer, we conducted a virtual STEM camp at several of our elementary schools in partnership with City of Sumter. And GIRA is currently working with ninth graders throughout our district to provide chungray and enriching experiences such as the new growth program that's about to kick off at Crestwood High School. Another way we will continue to improve science and social studies is in monitoring the implementation of support programs with fidelity. As an example, our middle and high school science teachers use an online learning program called Gizmo to provide lab simulations online, which are at the appropriate level of rigor, are used to report shows a high level of mutation. Training sessions align to levels of experience, for example, a teacher beginning with Gizmo or a spirit teacher have been required this year and more are special. In social studies, we've provided training in Exella, which is an online program supporting ELA and social studies. Teachers are using the articles to support the new emphasis on skills in social studies. A recent usage support report showed that many of our social studies teachers are using this program. Adit, TikTok, Twing, Kid Refurbishment Funds are just a few more examples of equitable and high-quality programs aligned to our standards that embed professional development at the appropriate level rigor that we will continue to use in support of standard implementation. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share, and I will now turn it over to Dr. Wallen.
Okay, and good morning, good afternoon, everyone. Our improvement strategies for CTE, as we continue to prepare our students to be career-ready, it is vitally important that we increase the enrollment of our students in CTE programs. So we are working on recruitment strategies, brochures, and communication with parents to offer students awareness of the CTE programs for our middle and high schools. We're also working to increase parent awareness. A lot of students are interested in CTE programs, and they receive some type of resistance when parents are not familiar with the opportunities that exist in CTE completers. So we wanted to make sure that parents are also aware. So our career specialists and guidance counselors are working together to provide information to both the students and the parents. And in order, in order to increase the number of students that are career-ready, we need to ensure that, that students are not only enrolled in a program, in programs, but they are also completing. When they complete, they must also have a nationally recognized, state or nationally recognized credential. So this year, we were very pleased to have a collaboration with Central Carolina to be able to offer our students OSHA TEN certification, and we continue to offer our students Microverse Soft Care Readiness Program for both students in middle school and students in high school. The certification comes at the high school level, while students can receive awareness at the middle school level. And we continue to promote our programs. We added two new programs this current school year with cybersecurity and law enforcement at the Career Center, but we also are reviewing and revitalizing some of our programs at the other high schools also. And we continue to maintain up-to-date technology every year. We have a replacement plan for all equipment in CTE, and so we want to make sure that we maintain the state of our equipment so our students will be well-prepared for the workforce. Thank you.
So at this time, it concludes item four point two from the Office of Academics. And as you can hear from the information, there's a wealth of information for you as it pertains to academics, as we continue to try and prepare our children to be college and/or career and/or military-ready. We always have the process in front of our minds that when we prepare our children for graduation, that we don't limit the opportunities for them. So as you can hear, and I just want to thank the team for being here this evening, the expertise of those individuals who are focused on an area of, a specific content area, and many of them have multiple areas that they oversee within our school district. And so at this time, I'd like to take, to give Dr. McLeod by the floor once again so she can provide you with the information as it relates to the homeschool report. Dr. McLeod?
Thank you. Children, parents, or guardians may choose to homeschool their children instead of enrolling them in a public, private, or parochial school. South Carolina statutes provide parents or guardians with three different, three different options for homeschooling their children. Option one allows the parent to homeschool their children under the auspices of the school district. If approved by Board of Trustees, this is the first time in quite a few years that we have one family, I think second grader to fourth grader, that submitted all the information and has been approved by Board of Trustees. In addition, option two, parents may homeschool their children with the support of the South Carolina Association of Independent Schools. And then in option three, parents may choose a homeschool association which has no fewer than fifty members and meets the home requirements. I have provided in your board packet this year's homeschool enrollment report, which will be submitted to the State Department this year. Due to COVID, we are up, we are at six hundred and forty students. Normally, after the last five-year trend, we run somewhere around below four hundreds, and we will be providing more information that breaks out where our students are. Ms. King assists me in the homeschool information to the parents, and she has shared, and I experienced it myself, that due to COVID this year, we have parents that their students would normally be with us, but they've been struggling for different reasons. Not that they aren't appreciating the teachers that their children are working with, the situation just currently isn't working as well for them, and they have informed us of their intent to return as we return to a normal society post-COVID. But at this time, our numbers are up approximately two hundred students for homeschool opt. And if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer those at this time.
Chair, will you allow us to ask some questions?
Yes.
Yes, I have two questions. The first one is for Ms. Carnes. The oral reading fluency, first grade? The, explain that again. Is that just a targeted group of kids since we only had seventy-one in the fall and eighty-five in the winter? And we got many, many more first graders than, than that in the district?
Yes, sir. Much like MAP growth, MAP oral reading fluency is an adaptive test. So all students start out with some silent reading and sentence reading fluency, and based on those initial questions, they're routed either to what we call foundational skills or to oral reading fluency. So those seventy-one students in the fall did well on their sentence reading fluency and the basic questions that were asked. The assessment routed them to oral reading fluency, whereas the rest were routed to foundational skills.
All right, so validation are the ones that are performing below level?
Necessarily below level, but the ones that are still working on that phonemic awareness, the letter naming, what we call not, not really reading connected text. They're identifying words and letters and sounds, but fluency would be the ability to read connected text, connected text in say a paragraph form. And that's not usually something that we expect fully from students until mid-year in first grade.
And out of the, how, do you have, how many first graders we have in the district since we just got seventy-one for the fall at that level? Out of how many does that represent?
I do not have the total number, but that represents about seven percent.
Seven percent out of all our first graders?
And in the winter, up to about eight percent approximately. No, I think it's nine, I'm sorry.
Okay, and do you have a comparable figure for the state on that one?
No, sir, I don't, because the pre- and post-assessment, each district is allowed to choose from a list of pre-approved assessments from the State Department. Every district in the state gives MAP growth or MAP reading fluency. But the data that I showed you was Parisian to their national norms.
Thank you. And my next question, I have two for Dr. Moore. Dr. Moore, it's good to put a name with a face. You've not been formally introduced to us, we knew you came on board. The dropout recovery, what, what, what does that indicate?
Yes, sir. So, and great to meet you guys finally. The dropout recovery rate has to do with students that re-enroll in school. So we, in some way, they have dropped out at one point, and they were able to be picked back up. So they were, they re-enrolled in school, or they got a part of a degree or diploma certification program. And so if they do that, we track those students and they, we, that, that informs our dropout recovery rate. So we look at those who drop out, and we also look at those who dropped out but then reconnected to school or some type of diploma earning program.
So an example would be maybe our daughter-in-a-program in the county?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay. And my next question for you, there's been a lot of information shared about school districts experiencing an extremely high failure rate, particularly in the middle school at the end of first semester and at the high school level. Do we have any data from our principals on what the failure rate is first semester for our middle school students and, of course, our high school students in the particular courses? And this time of year, we kind of get a feel for students that might possibly be retained in elementary grades. Have we gotten any information on what it's going to look like with, for example, in the elementary school with the number of retentions?
Dr. Moore, if I may, Dr. Baker, we are currently pulling that data, and the state is providing additional guidance and providing some additional time. We are looking at content recovery. Dr. Uffner and Ms. Davis and I have set up meetings with each school starting tomorrow, starting with high schools, to help them develop individual school plans to recover some of this content that has occurred due to either struggles with the virtual studying or just struggles with life due to COVID right now. But we are in that process right now, and we could be able to share some more information with that in upcoming meetings.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McLeod. And one question for you then. Do we have a new program? I'm familiar with the old credit recovery for the high school students. There's some talk out there, and, and I know, I don't think it's been shared with the board, but there's some talk out there that it is a credit recovery program to serve K through twelve. Is that what you're referring to in the district?
The K through twelve program that I'm speaking of is to provide support. It's very similar to, you may remember, Skill, Skills Bank or Study Island to help recover some of those. We see student, individual student deficits, and what this program is, it's modernized, and it uses our MAP data as well as other data to pinpoint where there are deficits and to tell us where students are ready to start instruction that day and move forward. We can use some of that information. Research on this program is very strong, but what we're really looking at doing is providing content recovery, not credit recovery. We're looking at the individual units, our set of standards that the students may have struggled with so that we can reteach in a different way and assess to find student mastery, because as you know, credit recovery can negatively affect some of our high school students when it comes to their eligibility for when it comes to their eligibility for sports activities and things like that. And we don't want that impacting their transcripts. We would rather intervene in advance with the teacher record before any of that would happen.
And are we able to even secure as money to pay for that program, or is that not permissible?
We're looking at that, and we're also looking at funding. We're in that process right now of trying to estimate how much we're going to need as far as if we need extended year or, you know, additional after-school programs, those kinds of things, to make sure that we are addressing the COVID gap that has occurred. And we are seeing it, we're seeing it across the board, but I am seeing biggest impact in elementary mathematics right now.
Thank you.
May I add, Dr. McLeod, would you speak to Engage South Carolina? Because I think that may be also what Dr. Baker is referring to. Can you speak to Engage South Carolina, please?
Yes, ma'am, and we'll be going into more detail with that next month. But Engage South Carolina is a program that the State Department has put together to try to re-engage some of our students that we have made all sorts of efforts to try to find them, get them back in school, help them be active in virtual learning. We have social workers, administrators, school resource officers going out to do welfare checks, and we find the students aren't there. So we're, they're helping us identify students and be able to provide additional supports through DSS to add different tiers, to be able to get these students, find out where they are, make sure they are in school, they're active participating, they're getting the supports that they or their families need to help them be successful in school. So we're still, that data is ongoing, we're meeting cuts with that, and we will be bringing in the attendance coordinator and power school to provide additional information on that next month. We're very, we're very happy to have the help from the State Department doing this.
Are there any, I'm sorry. Okay, let's go this way.
I think my question is to Mr. Moore. I just need you to clarify, you said that the NWEA MAP results, that the state said that everybody didn't have to report those? So you're saying some of our principals did not report their scores, and why would that be?
Yes, ma'am, so the summer survey is a survey that's sent out to all of our principals, and it captures information about how well the students are doing in those lower grades. And so the slide that we were looking at showed those results that were reported. Now, during the COVID-nineteen school closure time, the State Department made that summer survey optional for principals to complete. And so some of the principals reported, like we normally would, but the majority of our principals took the option not to report that information. And it's because they used different data pieces to share that information. And so because that option is there, and they did not test in the spring, it just really buried on if principals felt comfortable saying that was the case for the students because they did not have to be tested. So some principals reported, and others, the majority did not. So any information that is reported to the State Department is also recorded on our district report card. And so that particular portion, you are seeing the results of those principals who opted to complete that summer survey even with limited assessment data.
So we didn't have the expectation that they would all either give the results or all not give the results?
The information coming from the State Department was also going directly to the principals. And the MAP data, we have always traditionally used our spring data to answer that portion of the survey. Because like I stated, the winter has been optional for schools depending on their needs. So we did have some principals that went back to their winter data to try to make those projections. But again, that's another point where the districts have choices into ask what data they will use to determine what their projection for ready is, and they use different metrics for that. The state doesn't regulate that very much.
Okay, I have one more question. In the college and career readiness, there was no wind out of, because that test wasn't given. What kind of impact would that have on our results?
Well, the WIND test, we were able to administer it in this past fall. And so the only impact that it would have on us is the fact that we just did not have it available in the spring. So you would not have that data. But all of that is included in just how we determine if they receive certain certifications through WIND. So we, of course, assess those students in the fall, but it would not be reflected in the district report card. So you may see, depending on the students who showed that they were college and career ready through the WIND assessment, that would normally be given in the spring, you would not see that metric being reflected in those percentages. So potentially, those percentages would have been much higher, but we don't have that huge data source that is normally given through the WIND assessment in the spring.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Moore.
I have a couple of questions regarding where we fall either below or just below the state average. When it comes to our kindergarten readiness and our first and second grade students on track for success in ELA and math. At a previous meeting, I brought up the issue I have with us eliminating early childhood education. And I know that early childhood education plays an important factor into why we're falling below the state average when it comes to those two categories. Now, I just want to know, is there any progress being made on some type of implementation of early childhood across the district or to target this population of students that are falling behind when it comes to kindergarten readiness or the first and second grade students? I don't know who was here.
Sorry, can someone repeat? I couldn't hear.
He's actually asking a question about what our plans are to address our students and their readiness for kindergarten. What are our plans as we continue to have the discussion about what we do for our children before they enter into kindergarten?
Okay, we have, Ms. Cheryl Pril has just come on board as the Director of Early Childhood, and we are currently looking at ways to expand sort of right now to extend our learning year for our earliest learners this coming summer. So we are looking at the expansion. We know the need for our earliest learners to get a start in learning and be prepared for kindergarten first and second grade.
And then where we fall just below the state average when it comes to our graduation rate, in particular with our disabled students and our English language learners? What are some of the strategies that we're using to bring them up with all the other categories that were identified?
Talking about falling below the graduation rate with our students who receive English as a, our students who have English as a second language for those learners and for our students who receive special services. Ms. Davis and Dr. McLeod, if you can take that one for me?
Yes, I'll start by saying that we have invested into some programs with our instructional coordinator for special education to help our students, and particularly our special education students. Our teachers really wanted to move in the direction of utilizing IXL as one of the programs, along with some of the programs that we already had in place. We expanded our reading programs, such as Don Johnson, which coincides with Wharton Gillingham. But also keep in mind, in the state of South Carolina, there is a percentage of our population who will receive their certification based on the IEP goals. And with that being said, they are not included in that population for completers. So that goes against our graduation rate as well. So that is something that I have been a part of at the state level, and we're working on a corrective action plan to move in that direction so that those students will count towards graduation if they complete their program. So as a part of the Office of Students' School Services, I have volunteered to work on that as well to help our students with disabilities. With our students who are on track for a regular diploma, we have embedded some additional instructional activities and programs in place to support them. And we received feedback from the teachers as well as to what has been working and what has not been working. And we listen attentively to their needs. And some of the programs that were not working were too scripted, and they couldn't embed information from the instructional department as well as embed their goals and objectives in their IEPs. So now we have a blended model in place to help the students with the instructional component and their goals and objectives in their IEPs as well.
And one last reliefful statement. When it comes to college and career readiness, when it comes to our college and career readiness, we see with AP, IB program and our dual enrollment, we see where dual enrollment, we're making greater strides than we are with AP or IB programming. And I'm just wondering why we're not making that more of an emphasis over the other two programs when students and as well as the district is getting a bigger bang for their buck?
Did you all hear, or you want me to take it?
I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
So it was a matter of a comparison for AP and IB in terms of the bigger bang with dual enrollment and our students? Why is there a gap, shall I say, between IB, AP and dual enrollment? Where's Dr. Moore? Go ahead, I'm sorry, Dr. McLeod.
I believe a lot of that goes back to student children's, what their goals are for their future, and the counselors having those discussions with them. Many of our students are going to stay in-state, they express that, and they go into the dual enrollment track. AP and IB are for specific schools. Those students still need those opportunities. If they're looking at specific schools that require or highly suggest those programs, but for our overall population, they are choosing with their parents the dual enrollment track, and that's why you continue to see that track growing.
Thank you.
Yes, in regards to the testing, and it's a similar question that Mr. Ray had. Because the test was optional, I guess the data, the data results, how valid does it represent the district's progress or not progress or status? When you actually did not really get a representative sample or, you know, a response from all of the schools? And what is?
The testing was not optional. The testing was, as of March sixteenth, any testing that had not occurred would not occur. The reporting was optional based on if they got any of the testing, because we were just opening a few of the testing windows. If they were able to get any of the testing in, then they reported. It was optional, but they still used the same denominator in calculating the information that was going to be released onto the report card, which was not made clear to the districts. So if you look across the state, you'll see very similar. It's on the, what was reported on the district report card with the caveat on each factor that due to COVID-nineteen and the closure of schools, that this data is not representative. It's kind of difficult, you can't use a lot of that data other than the safety, the environment, the finance, the stuff that we did share because of the situation that we were in. And, you know, things were continuously changing daily. We were getting memorandum from the state as well as the schools on a daily basis as this was something brand new that none of us, I don't think we have anybody that would have been in the last pandemic, which was over a hundred years ago, still around to share information about that. So that was across the state, and we were told that there would not be any grading of schools or districts because of the emergency shutdown that occurred.
And I guess that's my point. So I would hate to have this, have, be a reflection, this year be a reflection on overall progress. So this report card, though, is available to the general public, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
And then is there any caveat where you could put that, you know, only a certain percentage of schools in Sumter District actually are represented? I mean, is there any detail that you can share, you know, in this report that says out of the sixteen thousand, you know, kids in Sumter School District, only four thousand participated, or whatever the numbers are?
We could gather that, but they will not let us alter what's on the State Department website at this time.
Okay, thank you.
To follow up on Ms. Mills and Ms. Ray's question about this test, the key point I think that Ms. Ray was trying to make is that the State Department said you didn't have to report the data, but everybody took the test, right? Well, you just said that on March or whatever, so they all had to take the test. I thought that's what you said.
March sixteenth, no good testing occurred. For us, it was Friday, March, Friday, March thirteenth was the last day we had taken, we were in attendance.
So you're talking about a winter assessment versus a fall assessment. And so when we're looking at the fall, we did administer the test to our best of our ability, which is in the fall at this time. All of our students did not take the assessment. When the pandemic hit, when the pandemic hit, we were just finishing the administration of the assessment. However, there's also another period where you can have makeup assessments. We were not able to engage with the makeup assessment. So to your point, it's not representative of the entire school district, and we cannot alter the state data on the state report card, which is what they're window.
I understand we can't alter what was reported. But my question is, is there, do we have data that was not reported?
So?
They said it was, that it came directly from the State Department to the principals. Principals had the option not to report the data. So my question is, do we have test scores on students that was not reported in the State Department because principals gave them the option not to report it? Yes or no? Do we have data that's available that we didn't report?
No, no spring data was available.
Oh, I'm really confused because I thought you said earlier that kids had taken the test, but principals chose not to report it.
Yeah, that it was optional.
That it was optional.
What was optional? That made clear it on, what exactly was optional?
Reporting was optional is what they said. Was taking, was taking the test optional?
No, in the spring, taking the test as of March sixteenth. Yeah, with the spring taking the test as of March sixteenth, it was optional.
Or how many kids took the test?
The only testing that occurred that the principals may have tried to use to determine whether they were on track for first grade or second grade within if they took in winter math, and that is optional according to the district. And the state doesn't normally use the winter.
But you not answer my question. How many kids took the test? None?
Yeah, and I said, which test?
Which test are you talking about?
I was talking about the one where they said that it was optional to report. Right, did y'all say that some of the principals took the fall data and reported that? Was that what I heard?
So what you need to do is separate two things, if I may, uh separate two things. Let's talk about the map assessment because I think we have two different assessments going on in conversation. The map assessment and when we look at the uh we the other assessments that we gave, the end of course assessment. So we need to break them up into uh the categories. But getting a specific number, I don't think anybody, I don't know, Dr. Moore, do you have that data on hand with the number of kids that actually took any of the assessments for last year? If not, I can get it to them. So do we have the number on hand for any of the assessments?
We don't have it on hand for right now, but we can pull it, it's very easy to pull. Um and this, we're referring to those schools that chose to give the winter assessment. And those principals who chose to give that winter assessment use that to report to the district report card. So every principal did not choose that, and that's why it's a different number. We can pull that information so we can report how many students actually um took that winter assessment so that you have those specifics.
So let's go ahead and do the winter assessment and uh the fall assessment to see because we do have some who took the fall, so I'll I'll provide that information uh in terms of the reporting.
So we're probably speaking of the fall twenty nineteen or fall twenty twenty?
Well, we know we have very little numbers in fall twenty twenty. So let's get both the map assessments for fall twenty nineteen and the fall assessments for twenty twenty. Uh because then you're comparing from semester to uh from winter to winter, not winter to fall. And so I think what happens is when we talk about the map assessment and how it's administered, let's talk about what the options are from the state, the number of students who took the assessment last winter. And then talking about the fall data as well. Because I think what's happening now, we have again two different discussions going on, trying to see clarification from winter to the fall. And so and from winter, fall, fall, and then the spring piece. So let's talk about, Jada, why don't you go back and talk about uh in terms of MAP, what it stands for, what its intended purpose is, and what the options are for uh South Carolina? And so I don't want to keep talking because I'm going to lose my voice altogether here.
May I interrupt? Please, ma'am.
Oh, sure, I thought you were talking to the chair.
Well, I'm talking to whoever can answer the question.
What what do you think?
Didn't you say the test you were talking about, seventy-seven kids took the test? Did I hear?
No, that was, that's what he was talking about.
Okay, what test was that?
I was talking about the NWEA math. You said not all principals reported the results, that that was an option from the state.
NWEA math?
Math.
Maps?
That's what y'all call the math.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's what I meant. It sounds as if we were talking about the different tests. So please let Dr. Martin Knox get her team to go on and give us the breakout the information the way that she was just talking about because we're talking about a conglomerate of tests. And doing our discussion. So would you please get direct your people to to give us what you have?
So Dr. McLeod, would you talk about MAP assessments for me under NWEA? Um where we talk about the winter, the fall, and the spring assessments? And when we compare assessments, we usually look winter to winter because it's uh the variance in cohorts. And MAP assessment is to measure progress. And so not achievement, but go ahead and talk about MAP. And then Dr. Moore, will you chime back in with the components that Dr. Baker was asking for? So we can delineate from the two components that were that were uh we're seeking answers to, if you don't mind?
Yes, ma'am, I think that we're confused and we're providing follow-up to the accountability from the twenty nineteen, nineteen-twenty school year. And then we're trying to give you information as to what the state has required us to do from August of twenty twenty going forward. For the nineteen-twenty school year, we normally MAP test within window of the first thirty or so days. The winter is normally an optional um data point assessment for the schools, depending on their needs and what their goals are and what they're looking at. And then we spring that. I think the confusion is with the ready for first grade and ready for second reporting on the report card from last year. So that that metric, we did not get to the spring MAP testing, which is the information the principals would normally use to populate this summer survey to determine whether the kids are on track for the next grade level, the upcoming grade level. So we did not get to that. However, some principals, because they're used to filling out that survey every year, did try to use either their fall or winter, if they took the winter, to make that projection as to where whether or not the students were um on track. However, the state still uses the same denominator, which within all of those schools. That's why that metric does not accurately reflect. And and honestly, honesty, I provided to you also in your pocket with the accountability manual, which metrics change from year to year. You have the accountability manual with you to determine the metrics. And it is February eighth, twenty twenty-one. And the state has still not provided the twenty twenty-one accountability manual for us. So I think that that's completely separate from moving forward. We were required by the state in the first ten days of school to have a pre-assessment. And they gave us a list that was approved and MAP was, MAP growth was approved. That's what we use, that's what our students and our teachers were used to administering and taking to determine where we are right now. We were asked to do it again, or we were told to do it again mid-year and had to have the results in by December thirty. And we went to do it again at the end of this school year to try to track growth. Well, as we know, being completely virtual in August, we, the schools worked extremely hard to try to get all of the students tested. However, we had some students that the parents just, they weren't going to put them on to test at that point. And several technology issues and those kinds of things. But in the December, we were able to get more students tested. But that is completely separate also from the screener requirement that has now been put in place as of this fall. We were allowed to choose from that list also according to the act. And we chose again a NWE um screen of assessment because, again, our teachers are familiar with the NW MAP growth and therefore the NWEA MAP fluency also was given for those K-one students to screen them for deficiencies and things like possible dyslexia, those kinds of things that are required on under the law. And they had, that has to be given three times a year also.
So Dr. McLeod, again, we are.
Or. Or.
Conversation.
So Dr. McLeod, what we'll do is I will draw out a chart, define each testing strategy or component that's utilized so we can clearly delineate. Because when we talk about giving assessments and we talk about testing windows and who it's like we still haven't talked about MAP and which grades are used for MAP and which grades are used for screener. We're going to have to spell it out uh for our audience, and I will provide it to the board in my weekly update. Uh so let's begin, and Emily, you're nodding, so let's clean it up. If the assessment in one column, the definition of the assessment, what its intended purpose is, and how many students took it in those particular grade levels that are specific. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am, we can provide that.
And so back to the one of the questions about students who took it in the fall, knowing that we began in a virtual capacity to your original question, no, it's not reflective of all of our students. Uh most of our schools attempted to get students to come in and take the assessment face to face because we were fully virtual. Some did a better job with getting kids in than many of the others did not. But is it reflective of all of our students in an aggregate? No, it's not. Our principals did a great job of beating the sidewalk, shall I say, just trying to get students to come in and take the assessment. And so we had some students we were not able to identify uh where they were. And we had some students who took it in a virtual capacity. We had some students, so there were not consistent variables when we're looking at the students. Uh so when we talk about the MAP assessment, when you're talking about nineteen to twenty, students took the winter but didn't take the spring because we were shut down. When we started for this year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, we had students who were uh able to come in and some students were not. Some parents said they were afraid to send their kids in, so we allowed those students to take the assessment in a virtual capacity. In smaller groups and smaller pockets, our students did come back. And then it had to be the first ten days and then uh the the standard shifted where the window was expanded for our students to come in and take the assessment. This has nothing to do with high school because high schoolers do not take this. This is K, we're talking about K. So I think when Dr. Moore was speaking, he was speaking of a totally different test than the MAP assessment. And so when Dr. McLeod talked about us recording, his schools did not have the option to get our students assessed. They referred back to a previous data point to complete the summer surveys. So there was just a lot going on. And again, in the spring, uh nobody knew what to do and how to do it because we were all in a state of of pandemic. And so we were continuing to work through and trying to figure out the best way to meet the needs of our students. We knew that there were going to be variables uh that impacted those students who were taking the assessment from home. We didn't know whether they were in a structured environment, non-structured environment. So that's why our principals uh tried to get kids to come in to take the assessment. And so they took it, they took it from home, if they took it, they took it in school. But again, there was just a lot going on, just trying to get students in the building, period, just to take the assessment. So um I apologize if there was chaos caused a few months ago, but we were talking about two different assessments. Uh and we were talking about different approaches in terms of what the state required versus what we normally do. Um so when we began, we continued in the spring to try to move forward as normal as we possibly could. But when we received the adjustments to the standards that we are supposed to follow, we tried to follow each and every expectation outlined by the state. And then that's when it came that we shouldn't uh grade kids, kids wouldn't, the test would be nullified, nullified. But because we did report most of the data or some of the data, that's what's being reported. And so to your point, it's not, it doesn't look good. But if you know that we're we're in a pandemic as a nation, uh that's that's what it's going to look like.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Ray?
I'm sorry, I think you're going further than we intended because all we were looking at is what's actually on the report card. And the question was if, what or whatever the principals who reported, reported. We're not talking about this fall, we're talking about the testing from last year. And I think you said some of them may have used winter data or fall data. My my point was, why did any of them report anything or, you know, or if, or all of them should have? Because that does look bad, but it was, of course, you know, they were all in there in the fall and they tried to use something and like I heard her say, the principals were used to reporting something. But it just sounded like we didn't do a directive to tell them, let's just don't report this because we don't really have accurate data because spring testing was gone because of the pandemic.
And to your point, we didn't give a directive. Because when we began this pathway, it was the expectation that we administer the assessment. And then later on, it was shifted that it was an option, uh just like with the grading and reporting. So we were getting different messages and not blaming anybody, so please don't take it that way. It depends on where you were in the testing uh category or in the window. Uh and we're in that place now. Um because testing for like end of course was supposed to start or in like February twenty-first at the end of the quarter. And because they've now extended the window, we didn't, some schools started testing kids. And so again, when you're ru- ru- uh when you're routine uh into doing your practices, some got ahead of the others. So when we got the message that it was an option and it wouldn't count, uh those who didn't put their information in before the timeline, they didn't enter the information.
Well, and I don't think they need to go to all that trouble unless y'all want all that information about all the testing. That was the only thing we were asking is how did they decide, you know, not to report or to report? And that, you know, that kind of skewed things, and I think that's what Ms. Mills was trying to say that, you know, if somebody's looking at the report card, they're not going to get a true picture. Of course, hopefully they'll remember the pandemic was happening and that nobody's got a true picture. But, you know, they don't need to do all that um that you were asking for, I mean, that's not necessary.
And I appreciate that. And whenever I have a moment to teach, if if I have someone who doesn't have clarification, you could be visual, you could be auditory. I'm just trying to provide you the information as you will see.
You just were going further than we intended.
And so, I'm sorry, so Lamont, you can scratch that off your list I saw you writing. Uh Dr. McLeod, Emily, I hope you all heard it. But again, uh the NWA, the MAP assessment is a data point that we typically utilize uh in schools. Um and that is the consistent data point, it is reported back to the schoolhouse. And like I said, when we began the process, we were still adhering to uh what was required. And then after a while, we were told it wasn't going to be required. So it depends on the where and the path. I'm not talking.
All right, I'm going to let you ask a question that I I have one question.
I think that uh since we're all looking at this report card, I think it's going to be reflective across the state and across the nation that all the report cards are going to look bad because everybody looks in the middle of the same thing at the same time. So it's not this uh Sumter School District isolated issue that it looks bad on our end. I think it's going to be reflective across school districts, if you would compare school districts, you will see the same results.
But my point is, if you are doing a Sumter School District report card, you shouldn't have some principals that elect to report and some it's optional. It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever that a directive should have said either all or none. That that that's my own point.
And so, and I agree with you. And I'll just say publicly, lesson learned, I'm human, I'm not perfect. And so had I known there was going to be a shift in the direction we were going, I would have put out a directive that you all will continue to follow the pathway. But we did not know mid-stage stream it was going to be shifted and then become an option. And so again, we were all battling with uh supporting our principals as they lead the work with our teachers, not knowing what was going to happen from one day to the next, from one hour to the next. We were just trying to manage. And so remember, we had just gotten the devices out to kids. We had kindergarten kids, pre-K kids, first grade kids who would probably never touch the device like they uh had done before. We were creating uh portals for our parents to be able to help us through this. But again, I think Emily talked about the social emotional aspect. Uh when you're traveling through and you were here with us, when you're going through this, it's very difficult to explain the how and why something occurred looking back hindsight is twenty twenty. Um if I would have known that if you the recorded data, I would have sent out a directive that you will do.
Yeah.
Hindsight is twenty twenty, but I will say our principals did a great job uh in trying to get as many kids as they could to get the assessment done, to make sure teachers were able to administer. And some of our schools actually, I think one of our schools like did maybe five or six kids at a time. And so again, that causes another ripple effect. Uh but again, if I'd known that the gears would have been shifted, I would have sent out the directive. But again, I'm going to use this one time, I was new.
Well, anyway, I I have one question for, uh I think it's Jada.
You mentioned that the State Department is going to provide assistance uh in having in place prior to, uh, to help with your enrollment report. Am I correct? To assist with your enrollment report.
Yes, ma'am, that's engaged C.
Okay, but will it be prior to the one hundred thirty-five day report for us to see some impact there? That will help us to make sure that we have our numbers up as far as enrollment is concerned?
Yes, ma'am, it's already um been enacted and we have started. We have gotten two names from each school and provided that. And the State Department is providing support um through the Department of Social Services to try to reengage these families, find out where they're at, find out what resources they need and get them back in schools, whether it's, whether they're in, still in our um district or if they moved to fund them and get them back into school wherever they are currently located.
I asked that question because I know that one hundred thirty-five day report is important to us as far as funds are concerned. And, you know, if we're going, if they're going to help us, we definitely need that help prior to that. Okay, thank you.
Ethan. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any other questions along the slide? Um, I'd like to acknowledge that Matt McLeod is, is here with us and has been for some time. So we're glad that you were able to join us, Mr. McLeod. Just wanted to acknowledge that you are here. Okay, um, Dr. Fennel. Um, you are down now to four point three?
Sure.
Four point three.
So at this time, excuse me, at this time, uh, Ms. Miller and Mr. Anderson, uh, if you would give us the report on the TRAIN uh project and work. Thank you, team. You all can.
Great job. We do appreciate all of you for being here this evening and providing, providing your input. Thank you.
Yes, good, Chairwoman, Chairwoman Jackson, Vice Chair, Vice Superintendent Dr. Martin Knox and Board members. Tonight, you will hear from John Anderson, who is a Senior Account Manager with TRAIN, to discuss the results of the energy savings detailed study that was conducted and to let us know the next steps in this process for our energy savings program. John?
Goodness, Ms. Miller and Dr. Knox, the board, appreciate your time on the agenda this evening. You've got a lot going on, a lot of uh busy discussions and citizens still making this COVID event. I'm going to share my screen. Tell me if you can see it. All right. So um, wanted to provide you with an update on the energy project. Um, this is just slide I've used basically page one in my presentations and time with you. It just takes us through the entire process of what uh is involved in uh doing an energy project the right way. Uh, and the last four steps are in red there, swear we're at. The last step we had was, says LOC, which is letter commitment that the, the board voted to move forward with. And uh doing a project, an energy savings project, and that's on six nine of twenty twenty. And so the last six uh or seven months, we have worked with the, the team at the Sumter School District to uh walk through all the buildings. We've been on roofs, we've been above ceilings, we've been in boiler rooms and looking at all the different systems there to uh develop the final details uh for a project. Um, the next steps which uh we can go through here, and I think the one is the, whether it's RQ or however, uh, you proceed with uh securing financing will be, I think that's a part of the agenda tonight as well, would be the next step. Um, and then uh contracts would be signed and we would actually begin making the improvements uh pretty quickly. Uh, as we, as some of these improvements can start all up. Uh, whether students are in school or not, we can get started on some of these pretty quickly though. So um, I wanna forget that, you know, as a, as a, as a six or seven months, I wanna make sure that I refresh my memory of just the benefits of how this program works and some of the things objectives that we uh look into, how we spend a piece of proof. And I always say the main one there is a group learning environment. You know, when we were talking about updating HVAC and building controls, those are all things that affect, affect the learning, classroom and learning uh kids are in the future to teach. Um, when, when there, the time allows in this pandemic, but you know, that's, that's a goal. We are, you are gonna be back in classrooms at some point in time, for confidence. Next, obviously, reduce energy and operational ops, that's how the program was designed. Those costs and pay for the program, a period of term agreement. And then to uh the big proactive, listen to third rate and issues that you might have or uh just equipment that's at or past, it's useful life, life. To upgrade those in a proactive manner versus reactive manner allows you to uh plan a little bit better and uh perceive the schedule as well. Uh, and, and to manage in this particular process, it's connected to single storage, which will be trained, who will be overseeing the entire project. So uh, anything that may come up during the whole process, um, you have one person to talk to and deal with and then we will handle the rest of the project. And lastly, the project is guaranteed, uh, your savings is guaranteed as well as the, the project operations being whatever we install is going to operate and operate correct. So, you know, that's the, the timeline we've been through, um, these are the, that's an objectives. And uh, as I mentioned before, we've uh, in the last six or seven months, have did the final detail analysis and come up with a program. Um, the first energy conservation measure, I'll call these again, as you would, is uh the LED lighting retrofit. District has already done some school buildings with LED lights. They're the most efficient light out there. And we basically would complete that, um, complete the rest of the buildings that don't have LED lights at this time. Uh, building controls, you have two different systems, if you would, that are in the school buildings, two different platforms, and we would basically just be uh upgrading the hardware and software of those systems and recommissioning of them to uh reprogram them to operate as efficiently as possible with the latest greatest technology that those systems offer. Uh, building envelope improvements involves a lot of insulation, ceiling of areas that may have separated, windows, doors, um, those type of things that just kinda make the buildings airtight so we don't get a lot of exfiltration um or infiltration of heat in the summer time as well. Um, we're going to uh replace some of the high, with high efficiency transformers in the school buildings. Uh, this is a pretty simple but a, a nice payback type of uh energy conservation measure. The transformers, when they go down, a part of, or all of the building could be down depending on what part of controls. And uh there are some that are definitely aged, we're going to discuss this with a higher efficiency skin transformer. And then lastly, the other, a lot of the other uh energy conservation measures provide more energy savings and the HVAC upgrade, while there's energy savings there. That's where a lot of your, a lot of district meets fall and they have a, you know, equipment that needs to be replaced. And uh, we will be doing that as well, uh, replacing uh some of the, as a maximum for end of life items of equipment that needs replacing, um, and uh that's what we'll be doing as well. So those are the energy conservation measures that we will be looking and putting in a project. Any questions? Or go to the next slide?
I have a question.
Okay, so this is another slide, hopefully you're familiar with, as I've used this before. Um, we have a twenty-year cash flow here showing a project of around fifteen billion, two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, the interest rate we're, we're showing right now is two point seven, obviously. We can, if, if, uh, we get better than that, which I think we can, we, that'll give improvement as well. Um, but you can see in the first column there, we have energy savings that uh based on the term of the project. Operational savings, these savings are maintenance and repair type items that uh you won't see uh uh once we make these improvements in regards to the simple things like lighting, light bulb replacements. Uh, some of the HVAC replacements we'll be doing those. We got these uh savings based on numbers we collected from the district for some of the repairs we're already doing. Gives you a, a total uh positive savings there in the third column. The fourth column is the annual service fee. And what that really is is simply the measurement and verification report that we provide you annually. Um, we show it going through the term of the uh savings, uh, that is, it's something that quite frankly, if you get uh ten years into it and you feel you're comfortable with the savings that we've been uh hopefully exceeding, then you're, you can, can cancel that service agreement for months, but we show it in the term of the project as well. And the next, the next, the last column there is uh, this is a flat payment, meaning the same payment every year. It's the principal and entry for the, the project amount financing in fifteen year or twenty years. And um, and then obviously the last column is the uh savings that we generated uh minus the uh, the cost of the annual payment showing a pa- cash flow, positive cash flow over a term of a billion four. The uh, as I mentioned before in one of our, our previous presentations, and, and how you set up the financing is at, at your discretion, if you would. And if you want to sculpt the uh payments to um look at needing the uh cash flow, so the payments are positive all year for you, you can do that as well. That's just something that can be handled through uh Ms. Miller and whoever the financial company is, so. Um, but that's uh, that's what the project looks financially. And um, so basically, you know, all we've got here to talk about, as I mentioned, we're, we're finalizing some of the details as we speak right now. And also preparing some of the contract language to get those prepared as uh, as Ms. Miller begins to pursue the finance campaign. We can uh get the project moving forward so we can start seeing some improvements, ma'am. Glad to answer any questions.
Ms. Miller.
Ms. Uh, yes, so um, did, do we have a listing of by school? What, what projects you're proposing to do per school?
We, we, we've looked at, like I said, we've looked at systems, all the systems in all the schools. And um, we will have that, that'll be a part of the contract. Uh, we've had these discussions with the uh, the administration team that we've been working with. Uh, those are the final details that we're, we're trying to work through um as we, as we move towards finalizing this.
I, I'm just, um, I, I am familiar with these because we do these in the federal government. Um, and I know the pluses and the minuses. Um, so I'm just wondering, uh, number one, baseline, you know, how you establish your baseline uh for these savings? Uh, and then two, if they're not holistic in a building, meaning you don't replace everything, all the HVAC, you're not in control of that whole building, you're only doing piecemeal, it becomes muddled over the years as to the cost savings. So I'm just curious about that approach.
Yeah, I mean, there's certain, I, I'd say it's um, like LED lighting, as I mentioned, we're gonna finish up the remainder, the remaining amount of schools that we're doing there. But our baseline, we typically, I think the year we use for baseline for energy is two thousand nineteen. Um, and that'd be the base year that we're using for our, our energy savings calculations that we've made. Um, but uh, you know, I, the, the thing that, that typically we um aren't able to do in every school is the HVAC just because, as I mentioned before, the payback is not as good. It's more of a capital related type program, but we know that's a need the school district staff. So we try to use the other savings to capture as much of those type of things that we can do. And that's a, in part of what we're trying to work through uh with the district to make sure that we're uh capturing. When we evaluate those, we look at the oldest equipment, um, the equipments that's most due to be replaced. Maybe some other equipment that's not as old, but it's been a nightmare for maintenance and repairs. You spend a lot of dollars on it, that'd be another item to look at. And uh, those are the kind of factors that we look at when we're evaluating HVAC replacements.
A- and then also um, the detail, and again, this is the details, but if you do um replace that HVAC system in that school, are you uh assuming responsibility through the life of the contract to replace that if it fails?
I, I apologize, I couldn't hear you.
If, if you do choose in your contract an HVAC system or a chiller, you are responsible for that for the life of the contract, yes or no?
For the life of the contract?
Yes.
No, we're not responsible for that for the life of the contract. Um, we have, we supply a warranty on the workmanship and stuff like that. We can offer a service agreement to maintain it, but we are not liable for that equipment for the life of the contract.
So um, this deal calls for you to replace all the lights in every school to go to LED?
Yes, well, every school does not already or currently LED. The Facilities Department had already started doing some schools with LED replacements and uh, so we would just be completing what they have not finished.
I'd like to request a list of the ones you're gonna be doing, please.
We will work with um the superintendent to get the information that's requested.
Okay, then you also alluded to going back to these HVAC units. You use the term end of life. All right, so, so my question is, what criteria do you use to determine end of life? Is it, is it this, this unit's been here ten years or this unit's been here fifteen years? What criteria?
That's a good question. We, we use ASHRAE, which is the Association of, uh, I forget the, Rich, can you help me out there, buddy? Rich is my energy engineer through Gulf project. He is a member of ASHRAE, I'm not, so I'm not familiar. They have standards for every piece of equipment and what's their uh typical life.
Okay, so, so my next, so to follow up on that then, if you can get the criteria straight, I'd like to know how many units and in what schools are you planning to replace the HVAC units in that are near, that are end of life? I'd like a list of that as well.
Again, we want the superintendent to get you the information that's requested and that is what we are next phase of this project is determining which ones we are going to replace. Those decisions have not been made at this point.
Okay, so, so, but if he, but you, your question that was asked just now, if you do replace an HVAC unit, then the only warranty we have on it is the manufacturer's warranty?
Uh, yes, and, and, and our warranty on workmanship.
But that runs out before the end of the contract? That guarantee, workmanship doesn't last nineteen years. How many years does it last?
It can last that long, some units don't. I mean, when we talk about end of useful life, it, it varies with, and it also depends on the, you know, if it's being maintained well and those type of things. But uh, yeah, I don't know that there's anybody out there, unless you pick up a service agreement for, for us or even somebody else to maintain that equipment though.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to determine what kind of deal we got going here before we sign the bottom line.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ray.
I know that we've had replaced a lot of the HVAC system. Do y'all know, uh, just right from the topic you had, how many we are new or fairly new? Because that's an ongoing project in the district.
That's the question we asked, ma'am.
Yeah, again, we have, it's with the number of buildings you have to, to get into those type of details, it was very difficult to do that in this type of a presentation. But, you know, another factor that's important that we looked at as well, which was brought up by Mr. Chan, was that, you know, a lot of the older units, there's still a lot of units in the district that use an old, older freon, which is going to be discontinued. So that's another reason, that's another piece of the pie that we considered when we, when we're looking at HVAC replacements, so. Um, because that, that freon is getting extremely expensive as it gets phased out.
Was that R twenty-two, right?
Yes.
Any questions?
Ms. Nils, I'm sorry.
I've got a lot of questions, but I'm, I'm gonna hold off.
Well, I, I, I think, I think what's being asked for wouldn't, wouldn't happen right here, like Jennifer was saying. I think you want identification of the school.
More detail.
Therefore?
More detail.
That's what I'm about to say. Identification of the specific schools, what's going to be done? And all of that, more of a breakdown so that when you look at it, you can adjust and see exactly what, what he's proposing.
Yeah, they're, they're guarantee you a certain savings and that's the basis of the whole deal. But you're going to save so much in energy cost. So you just have to understand how they're coming up with that calculation and how is that going to happen for the life of the contract? Because through the life of the contract, stuff fails, you replace it. Does that change the, the bottom line of how they get those savings? Yes, it does. So, I mean, you just, if you go into, I mean, it, it can be a great program. It's just, we have to understand everything that's going into it.
All right. May I ask Jennifer a question?
Sure.
Jennifer, so I think what this chart says is we're going to borrow fifteen million dollars, right?
I'm sorry, I'm having a lot of trouble hearing, but if I understood you, you said according to what the chart says.
According to what this cash flow summary says, we're going to borrow fifteen million dollars, right? And we're gonna, and we're gonna replace some LED lighting, we don't know how many schools yet. We may replace some air conditioners, right? We don't know how many yet, right? And in the end, it says we're gonna, and in the end, we're gonna save one million four. And everybody says over twenty years.
Twenty years.
We're gonna save one million four over twenty years after borrowing fifteen million. And we don't know how many schools are going to get new lights, we don't know how many schools are going to get new HVAC. And the man says he can't guarantee how long the thing's gonna work once he puts it in. No disrespect, Mr. Anderson.
Actually, we're saving not just the 1.4 million, we're saving not to be able to pay back that loan as well. Plus you net with the 1.4 million positive.
Okay, so we're gonna, but we, I mean, but we're still paying back the loan, it's not, you're not making any money on the deal. You're borrowing fifteen million, you're paying it back.
And then making 1.4 million so we're able to, those improvements.
Okay.
With the savings that we're.
I think, I think the way to look at this is you're getting fifteen dollars worth of upgrades that aren't costing you anything because it's paying for itself for the project. But to answer your question on the details, we, we do have all these details. We know which schools are, are getting the LED lights, I mean, we've walked every building, those kind of things. I know, we need to share that with you. Like I said, those are hard to spear in a meeting or a Zoom call like this. But, but as I mentioned, Ma'am, Ms. Miller, we, we have these details, we're working through all the file.
That'd be great, thank you. Thanks so much.
Sure, Ms. Miller, 4.5.
Yes, and the next item on the agenda, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your presentation. The next item is 4.5, the resolution to approve the financing for the project. This allows us just to have the resolution in place and not to exceed amount. And then we can move forward, we're doing an RFQ to ensure we're getting the best interest rate available to us. And I have Rainie Pajer, I was gonna say, I saw her name and now I see her face, she's here. Everybody should be familiar with her with Berg, Foreman, and McNair Law Firm. And she can answer any questions that the board has on that debt resolution at this time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, it's always great to be with y'all. I appreciate this virtual meeting, I'd be happy to be in Sumter. And so the very first time we can be with y'all physically, I would certainly like to do that. Mike Gallagher, who is the school district's financial advisor, with some of his municipal advisors, and has been working closely with Ms. Miller and myself in, in making some recommendations regarding the financing for your, your, the contract, the performance contract. So the resolution that y'all have before y'all actually authorizes a number that's probably higher than you will ever need, 22 million. That number could be lowered tonight if you wanted to, if that was the will of the board. We, we set a not to exceed number, not necessarily not thinking that that would be the amount to be borrowed. The resolution actually delegates to the superintendent and, or her designated Ms. Miller. They've worked together with Mr. Gallagher, with the train folks, with me to determine the appropriate amount to be, to be borrowed. As Ms. Miller said, this transaction will be competitive in, in one respect or another. This debt is not general obligation debt. This debt is what we call an equipment acquisition, use and security agreement. And that is in effect, an installment purchase for, for equipment. I know some of y'all out in Baker, you're familiar with the lease purchase, which used to be, still is a way that the school districts can acquire equipment. But a lease purchase where you're literally making revenue payments has to be paid from your general, general fund. The, the, the transaction, we're recommending the acquisition, use, acquisition, use and security agreement can be paid from the savings that comes from the, the contract. It also could be paid from the proceeds of GEO debt. The y'all issue debt annually to make your other installment purchase revenue bond payments. And so that would be something that, that you might want to consider, but this, this format will give you that flexibility. So the, the, as far as how, exactly how the debt will be placed, we would either do a request for proposals from banks. And then depending on the size of the transaction, if you're, you know, in a 15 million, 20 million, that might be more than a bank would want to, would want to lend. And, and the bank may want a shorter term. In, in that instance, we would want to be able to access the public market. We would get a bond rating and probably sell competitively or go through a process to engage an underwriter. So I, I know that there's not a whole lot of meat on the bones right now in, in terms of this resolution. But this is the same format that y'all have adopted before, which sets the maximum amount. It sets what the, the debt's going to be used for, and delegates to your administration, making the, you know, making the final decision. And I should mention, if I haven't already, that this debt, because it is not GEO debt, it is, does not count against your 8%, it is an annual appropriation. So technically, every year, the school board has, has the right to decide to appropriate or not appropriate. You know, that, that's something that banks and lending institutions and bondholders have gotten used to. Luckily enough, on Wood, there's not ever been, there's never been a non-appropriation in South Carolina. So, so we know that this form of debt is something that has a high level of comfort in, in the marketplace. One, the last comment I make is that this document does have embedded in it reimbursement language. So that if the, that was appropriate to start spending money on the early stages of the project, when you actually enter into, we actually issued this debt, you, the school district would be able to reimburse itself for the monies that has, has advanced in the early stages of the, of the transaction. And I know that was a lot and it's kind of quick, but I'll be glad to answer any questions and look forward to working with y'all, always appreciate the opportunity.
And one thing I also wanted to bring up is with the SO2 funds that are available to the district, there is an option to utilize some of those funds as well, help make some improvements to the HVAC and systems within our school district.
Okay, thank you. And are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer and Ms. Rainey for your reports.
Thank you, you're very welcome.
Okay, thank you. So that means that we would need to read that resolution and all of it after, when we come down?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Before we go into executive session. Is it possible for us to delay taking action on 4.4 and 4.5? Can we decide to get additional information? Like what schools are going to get new lights, what schools are going to get new AC? Before we go one way or the other on 4.4 and 4.5?
We can talk about that in executive session. We can talk about that in executive session.
No, we can just go on into executive session and then we'll come out.
No, no, I, I, I want to know, my question is.
She said you can vote to propose.
That's my question, not, not whether we can talk about it in executive session, but whether we can not, not take any action on these two items tonight.
She just said that you can vote to propose.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Dr. Knox, you finish your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are there any other questions for anyone here? Okay, then, if not, we will go into executive session.
Ms. Chairman, Chair, can I ask the superintendent a question?
Yes.
Madam Superintendent, would you be opposed to that, what Dr. Hilton is raising, or to get the information to him?
I'm not opposed.
You're not opposed to postpone it? Okay.
Okay, we're now at the portion of our meeting that calls for the board to enter into executive session. To the public, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your interest in Sumter School District. While there is no designated time for how long we will be in executive session, we hope you are with us when we return. However, if you're not, we are going to wish you a pleasant evening and thank you for your support and wish you a safe and good work week. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending, threatened or potential claims, discussion of proposed property contractual matters, discussion of proposed contractual matters, and discussion of personnel report, employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and/or release of an employee.
Correct. Okay, there is a motion and a second that we enter into executive session for receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending, threatened or potential claims, discussion of proposed property contractual relating to pending, threatening, threatened or potential claim, discussion of proposed property contractual matters, discussion of proposed contractual matters, and discussion of personal report, employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and/or release of unemployment. Is there any discussion? We will ask that you pass a view, pass your vote electronically, please.
Where are we getting here, anybody? Did you vote?
Huh? Did you vote? Are you not in the room today?
You vote here. You vote here, please.
It's unanimous.
Yes, okay. The motion passes unanimously and the board is now in. Ms. Dr. Superintendent, what is your pleasure?
I would ask the board to adopt personnel reports.
We skipped 7.2.
You got to go back to 7.2.
Yeah, someone just makes a motion.
All right, 7.2, proposed property contractual matter, may I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approves the proposed property contractual matter.
Second.
Okay. Are there any discussion? Okay, do we vote on that any?
Electronic, let's keep it up there.
Okay, we want to vote, please pass your vote electronically.
If you want me to enter it, I can do it.
And I, I can support. All right, the vote is unanimous that we approve the proposed property contractual matter.
Personnel report?
Uh, we're now down to 7.3, personnel report. Dr. Martin Knox, what is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, I ask the board to consider the personnel report as presented in executive session, considering about the personnel report as presented in executive session.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the personnel report as presented. Second.
It has been moved and second that we accept the recommendation, the personnel report as presented. Are there any questions? We will vote electronically to confirm our vote, please. Yes.
unanimous.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. And we are now down to 7.4, Energy Saving Program.
Madam Chair, person, I'll make a motion that we postpone any action on this item until our next regular meeting.
We have.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we postpone 7.4 Energy Saving Program until our next regular.
Is that Mr. Reagan?
Meeting, seconded by Mr. Reagan. Do, we, we will vote electronically, please. Yes. Okay, the vote passes unanimously. Okay, we are down now to 7.5, Resolution Approving Financial and Financing of Equipment and Conserv, Conservation Measures Related to the Tran Performance Contract.
Madam Chair, I move that we postpone any action on item 7.5, Resolution Approving Finance and Equipment Conservation Measures Related to the Tran Performance Contract. Second.
Until the next.
Until our next regular meeting, thank you. Until our next regular meeting.
Okay, and who's second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and second that we postpone our, this until our next regular meeting at the Resolution Approving Financing of Equipment and Conservation Measures Related to the Tran Performance Contract. We're going to, let's vote electronically, please.
Yes, ma'am, that unanimous.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. We're down now to 7.6.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve first reading of GB, GAB, Litation Accommodation, GCOA, Evaluation of Instructional Staff, ACB. GAB, lactation accommodation, GCOA, evaluation of instructional staff, ACB, educational equity, ACE, service animals, GB, GAA, service animal staff, IMG, animals in schools, and JLCC, service animal students.
It has been moved and second, that, um, the board approved first reading SC, SBA policy and legislative update, GB, GAB, lactation accommodation, GCOA, evaluation of instructional staff, ABC, educational equity, ACE, service animals, GB, GAA, service animal staff, IMG animal in schools, and JLCC, service animal students, um, it has been moved, are there any questions or discussion? Okay, please cast your vote electronically. Okay, the, uh, motion passes unanimously, uh, we're now down to seven point seven.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve first reading of policy, BEDL, board members and electronic communications.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made, and second, that we, uh, approve a first reading model policy, BEDL, board members and electronic communication, um, are there any discussion? Please cast your vote electronically.
You got all signatures?
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're downed out to the consent agenda, and on consensus and with no objection, the consent agenda is approved, um, again, I would like to say that we appreciate your presence, and ask that you continue to be safe, practice social distancing, and wear your mask, have a blessed week, and there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned at what time? It's ten fifteen, and we would thank you, thank you, thank you, have a blessed week.